Few questions are extremely important questions. If the equation is A x cube plus B x square plus C x plus D equal and to zero. This is a cubic equation with a degree three. If it is a cubic equation, some of the roots taken one at a time, it is nothing but minus B by A. Minus B by A, it is very easy if I take roots one at a time, it is nothing but minus one power N. Into B by A, N is the number of roots taken at a time, one at a time so N value equal and to one. Suppose if I am taking some of the roots taken two at a time. Two at a time is three roots are there, alpha, beta, gamma, taken two at a time. So if three roots are there, if I take three. Two roots at a time, out of three select any two, three C two will be three. So that three I added, it is nothing but C by A. Why it is C by A, this is nothing but minus one square into C by A. One at a time will be nothing but B by A into minus one. Two at a time will be C by A into minus one square. Three at a time, three at a time is nothing but alpha, beta, gamma which is nothing but D by A. Minus one power three, so it is minus D by A, it is nothing but D by A. Now, very, very important. If B is equal and to zero, when I say if B is equal and to zero. That means if the coefficient of X square if it is equal and to zero. If the coefficient of X square it is equal and to zero, B is zero. First of all, A cannot be zero, for it to be a degree three, A cannot be equal and to zero. If coefficient of X square if it is equal and to zero, B is zero. That means the sum of the roots taken one at a time will be zero. Some of the roots taken one at a time, it will be zero. Some of the roots taken one at a time, it will be zero. If C is equal and to zero, if C is equal and to zero, what is C, coefficient of X. If the coefficient of X if it is equal and to zero, if the coefficient of X if it is equal and to zero. If C is equal and to zero, some of the roots taken two at a time will be zero. Some of the roots taken two at a time, it will be zero. Taken two at a time, it will be zero. I hope it is clear, if D is zero, if D is zero, what is D, D is nothing but constant. If the constant is equal and to zero, what is that, that will be zero, product of the roots will be zero. Product of the roots will be zero, product of the roots will be zero. I hope it is clear, when the sum of the roots taken one at a time will be zero. When the sum of the roots taken two at a time will be zero. When the product of the roots, it will be equal and to zero. These, all these, next forty five minutes, I will concentrate on solving the questions based upon these concepts. I hope it is clear, similarly, let me do one more. Once the basics are clear to you, then if it is a degree four. A x power four plus B x cube plus C x square plus D x plus E equal and to zero. What is this expression, this expression is of degree four, this expression is of degree four. If this expression is of degree four. If the expression is of degree four, some of the roots taken one at a time. Alpha plus beta plus gamma, it will be B by A, minus one power one, so it is minus B by A. Some of the roots taken two at a time, two at a time will be alpha, beta. Alpha is with beta, alpha is with gamma, alpha is with delta. Beta is with gamma and beta is with delta and gamma is with delta. It is nothing but C by A minus one square, it is nothing but C by A. Can I write this one, some of the roots taken two at a time, listen carefully sir. Some of the roots taken two at a time. Some of the roots taken two at a time, two at a time, can I rightly. Write it like this, alpha plus beta into gam-. Gamma plus beta, delta plus alpha, beta plus gamma, delta equal and to zero. Can I write like this, why, because some of the roots I can determine if it is quadratic. Product of the roots, some of the roots of another two gamma delta. Some of the roots taken two at a time. Alpha plus beta into gamma plus delta plus alpha, beta plus gamma, delta. These alpha, gamma, these alpha, delta, alpha, gamma, alpha, delta also will be there somewhere, alpha, delta. Beta, gamma, beta, delta, all two into two four, please make a note of it. Some of the roots taken two at a time. It is alpha plus beta into gamma plus delta plus alpha, beta plus gamma, delta equal and to zero. Three at a time, three at a time is nothing but. Alpha, beta, gamma, alpha, beta, delta. I hope it is there, out of four select any three, next it is nothing but beta, gamma, delta. Next it is alpha, gamma, delta. Three at a time is nothing but D by A minus D by A. D is nothing but product of the root C is E by A minus one power four, it is E. These are all are extremely important questions might not be only on a quadratic. It could be on a degree three or a degree four. Some of the roots taken one at a time, some of the roots taken two at a time. D is nothing but minus one square, D is nothing but minus one power one. D is nothing but minus one power three. Alpha, beta, gamma, delta is nothing but minus one power four. I hope the idea it is clear, now one very, very important key point. Some of the roots taken three at a time, some of the roots taken three at a time. If it is zero. This is also nothing but one by alpha plus one by beta plus one by gamma plus one by delta equal and to zero. Denominator it will be alpha, beta, gamma, delta. So alpha will go, what is remaining, beta, gamma, delta. Beta will go, what is remaining, alpha, gamma, delta. Gamma will go, alpha, beta, gamma, delta, delta will go, alpha, beta, gamma. Very, very important key point, some of the roots taken three at a time. If the sum of the roots taken three at a time, it is zero. That also means some of the reciprocal of the roots, it is zero. Write down in your notebook, some of the roots taken three at a time. If it is zero, some of the reciprocal of the roots, it is also nothing but zero. Very, very important when we are doing advanced level question, you will understand it. I hope all these concepts are clear to you. All these concepts are clear to you, now let me discuss one by one this question. Alpha, beta are the roots of the equation, X square. Minus X minus one equal and to zero. Some of the root C is minus B by A, minus into minus one, one. Product of the root C is C by A which is minus one. Some of the root C is one and product of the root C is minus one, this we got. The, then the equation whose roots are, if the roots are alpha power five plus beta power five. If this is root, the sum of the roots plus alpha power five into beta power five, it is equal and to zero. Solving alpha power five and beta power five, right. Long expansion it will be there, so what we will do is we will make it little easy for you. X square minus, X minus one equal and to zero. Can I write it as X square equal and to X plus one. If I square it, X power four equal and to X square plus two X plus one. X power four is nothing but, X square is X plus one. So D is nothing but three X plus two. If I multiply by another X, D is nothing but three X square plus two X. X power five is nothing but, X square raise X plus one plus two X. D is nothing but five X plus three, five X plus three over answer. Because alpha and beta are the roots of these expansion. Alpha power five will be equal and to five alpha plus three. Beta power five is nothing but five beta plus three, five beta plus three. Now see here, one by one we will solve it. So D is nothing but X square minus of, instead of alpha power five substitute this. Five alpha plus three, instead of beta power five substitute this. D is five into alpha plus beta plus six. Into X, are you all with me, so alpha plus beta it is one. Plus alpha, beta power five, it is nothing but equal and to zero. Alpha plus beta it is nothing but one, so X square minus eleven X minus one equal and to zero. Beautiful question sir, X square minus eleven X minus one equal and to zero. Idea clear right, so some of the roots, what I did step by step I will explain. This is a quadratic expression, some of the root C is given by minus B by A. Minus into minus one plus one, product of the root C is given by minus one. Alpha plus beta it is one, alpha, beta it is minus one. So X square equal and to X plus one, square it, X power four equal and to X square plus two X plus one. Wherever X square is there, I substituted X plus one, I substituted here. I substituted wherever X power four is, X square is X plus one, I substituted instead of this one. Again I multiplied by X, why I multiplied by X, because I require X power five. So X power five is nothing but five X plus three. So alpha power five, because alpha and beta are the roots of the equation. So by substituting the root, I will get the F of alpha equal and to zero. Alpha power five, wherever X is there I substituted alpha, wherever X is there I substituted beta. And I just to use the equation, no need to find out alpha power five and beta power five. Just by using some of the roots and product of the roots, you can solve these equation. I hope the idea it is clear, I hope the idea it is clear. Even if the question is like this, suppose for example. Instead of alpha power five and beta power five, if the question is. Alpha power four and beta power four, what will be the answer? X square is nothing but X plus one. X power four is nothing but X square plus two X plus one. So X power four is nothing but three X plus two. X square is X plus one, it is three X plus two. So alpha power four will be three alpha plus two. Beta power four will be three beta plus two. Three beta plus two, so what is the sum of the roots here? Some of the roots is nothing but minus B by A, one and product of the roots will be minus one. So D is nothing but X square minus of alpha power four plus beta power four. Into X plus alpha, beta power four equal and to zero. D is nothing but X square minus of three into alpha plus beta. Two plus two it is four into X minus one power four plus one equal and to zero. Alpha plus beta it is one, so three plus four it is seven. Answer is X square minus seven X plus one equal and to zero. I hope the idea it is clear. Idea it is clear right, alpha power four and beta power four. Similarly you can solve any such questions, alpha power eight also you can solve. Suppose what will be alpha power eight, alpha power eight will be. Suppose three alpha plus two whole square, D is nothing but nine alpha square. Plus twelve alpha plus four, plus four, alpha square is nothing but a alpha plus one. Am I right, plus twelve alpha plus four, nine alpha plus twelve alpha, twenty one alpha plus thirteen. You can also do alpha power eight and beta power eight. Idea clear right, please do not use unless an entity is required. Do not use any. Identities, just to go through the basic understanding of the root and try to solve the problem. I hope this idea it is clear, alpha power eight, alpha power eight also you can solve it. Just an example I did it for alpha power eight, alpha power eight you can do it. I hope the idea it is clear, similarly, the next question is. Alpha, beta, gamma are the roots of the equation, if it is the roots of the equation. X cube minus X plus one equal and to zero. Alpha plus beta plus gamma, it is nothing but minus B by A, so D is nothing but zero. Alpha plus beta plus gamma, it is nothing but zero, there is an identity. A plus B plus C if it is equal and to zero. A cube plus B cube plus C cube, it is nothing but equal and to three A B C. It is nothing but three A B C, why it is, why because. A cube plus B cube plus C cube minus three A B C. It is nothing but A plus B plus C. Into A square plus B square plus C square. Minus of A B plus B C plus A C. A plus B plus C if it is zero, zero into anything, zero into anything, it will be zero. So therefore, if A plus B plus C if it is zero. A cube plus B cube plus C cube it is nothing but equal and to three A B C. I hope it is clear, or probably reverse also you can do if. A cube plus B cube plus C cube, if it is equal and to three A B C. If the left hand side is zero, right hand side either one can, first term can be zero or the last term can be zero. That means either A plus B plus C is equal and to zero. Or A square plus B square plus C square equal and to A B plus B C plus A C. Either this or this, I hope the idea it is clear, this is an extremely important identity. For the students who are going to write examination where algebra is of maximum weightage. So some of the roots is equal and to zero. If the sum of the roots is equal and to zero, D is nothing but. Alpha cube plus beta cube plus gamma cube, D is nothing but three alpha, beta, gamma. What is alpha, beta, gamma, it is nothing but the product of the roots. So three ones are, what will be the answer, three, I hope the idea it is clear. If A plus B plus C if it is equal and to zero, A cube plus B cube plus C cube equal and to three A B C. These only we want, some of the cubes of the roots we want, so alpha cube plus beta cube plus E. Gamma cube is equal and to three A B C, idea it is clear, fourth question, fifth question. It is given that root five plus one by two is a root of the equation. Now please write down a concept. Write down a concept. A x power four plus B x cube plus C x square plus D x plus E equal and to zero. Only if the coefficients are rational, if A, B, C, D, E are rational. Only if the coefficients are rational, if then one root, if one root is P plus root Q. Another root will be P minus root Q. Again and again I am emphasizing, only if one root is P plus root Q. Then another root will be P minus root Q. As long as the coefficients are rational numbers, you can use conjugate certs. If the coefficients are real numbers, if one root is P plus root Q. Another root will be, cannot be determined uniquely, cannot be determined uniquely. So the first thing what you should do is. You should see the coefficients, are the coefficients, are they all. Rational numbers, one minus five, two, three, all are rational numbers. Definitely I can use conjugate certs concept, now let us go ahead and use this concept. X power four, X power four minus five X square plus two X plus three. It is equal and to zero, X power four minus five X square plus two X plus three equal and to zero. So X cube coefficient if it is zero, some of the roots. Taken one at a time, it is nothing but zero. Some of the roots taken one at a time, it is nothing but zero. And the product of the root C is nothing but three, product of the root C is nothing but three. Just by looking at a question, two conditions are derived, some of the roots taken one at a time it is zero. Some of the roots taken one at a time it is zero, why some of the roots taken one at a time it is zero? Why, because X cube coefficient it is missing. Alpha plus beta plus gamma plus delta equal and to zero. Sum should be equal and to zero, product should be equal and to three. So one root is nothing but one plus root five by two, one plus root five by two. D is nothing but P plus. One plus root five by two, if it is P plus root Q, another will be another root. Because the coefficients are rational, another root will be P minus root Q. Which is one minus root five by two, if one root is one plus root five by two. Another root will be one minus root five by two, I hope this idea it is clear. Now we have to go by the answer option, can be. Suppose if I take alpha as one plus root five by two. Another root will be P minus root Q, one minus root five by two. If gamma if it is. First option, minus one plus root three by two, minus one plus root three by two. Delta will be P minus root Q, minus one minus root three by two. I hope it is clear conjugate certs happen in trades, some anyway, one plus one two, two minus two zero, it is satisfying this. But is the product equal and to three, alpha and beta. It is nothing but A square minus B square divided by four. Gamma and delta, one minus three divided by four. One minus five is minus four, one minus three is minus two. Minus four into minus two is eight, eight divided by sixteen, I am getting one by two. What should be the product of the roots, product of the roots should be three. That means my first option it is incorrect, first option it is incorrect. Let me take, you have to go by the answer option approach, that is the best way to solve this question. Because the question is, can be. If it is alpha plus beta plus gamma plus delta, it should be equal and to zero. And alpha, beta, gamma, delta, it is nothing but three. Let me go with the fourth answer option, if alpha is one plus root five by two. Beta will be one minus root five by two, one minus root five by two. Let the last option be gamma, minus one plus root thirteen by two. Delta will be minus one minus root thirteen by two. P plus root Q, another option will be P minus root Q, P minus root Q. Let us do, some of the roots anyway is zero, product of the roots, let me do. A square minus B square, one minus five by two into two four, one minus five by four. D is nothing but minus one square, one. One minus thirteen, two, two are four, one minus five is minus four. Next one, one minus thirteen is minus twelve, four, four are sixteen. Forty eight by sixteen, reminder it is three, so the answer is nothing but root thirteen minus one by two. Very, very good questions we are going to solve it today sir. Coefficient of X cube it is missing, if the coefficient of X cube if it is missing. That means some of the roots taken one at a time should be zero. If one root it is P plus root Q, another root will be P minus root Q. As long as the coefficients are rational numbers, I used this concept, you have to go by the answer option. Very, very good question, please put a star mark on this question and kindly revise it. Most of the questions whatever I am discussing, you will not find it in the regular textbooks, next one. Root three plus one by two is one root of the equation. Equation is X power four plus A x cube plus B x plus B x. Plus C equal and to zero, A, B, C are integers. Any integer number is also a rational number, also a rational number. What is missing in this question, X power four, X power three, X power two is missing. X cube coefficient will give you, some of the roots taken one at a time. X square will give you, some of the roots taken two at a time, please write down the idea. Some of the roots taken. Two at a time, some of the roots taken two at a time, it is equal and to zero. Some of the roots taken two at a time if it is equal and to zero. What it can be written as, alpha plus beta into gamma plus delta. Plus alpha, beta plus gamma, delta equal and to zero, which I explained. Some of the roots taken two at a time is given by. Alpha plus beta into gamma plus delta plus alpha, beta plus gamma, delta equal and to zero. Alpha it is given in the question, one plus root three by two. If one root is P plus root Q, another root will be. P minus root Q, so it is one minus root three by two. Let gamma be the first option, minus one plus root two by two. One is P plus root Q, another will be P minus root Q. Minus one minus root two by two, let us check it out whether you are getting the answer. Alpha plus beta, so it is nothing but one plus one. One plus root three, one minus root three, one plus one two, two by two, it is nothing but one. It is nothing but minus one, I hope it is clear. Plus alpha, beta, one minus three, one minus three is minus two, divided by two, two are four. One minus two, it is nothing but minus one, divided by four plus. Equal and to zero, one into minus one, it is minus one. D is minus one by two, D is nothing but minus one by four. Minus one minus one by two, minus one by four, minus one by four, sum is not zero, so it is incorrect. So what probably you can do is, you can change the values and you can, what will do is. Instead of first option, let me take a third option, I hope you got the idea. Once you got alpha, you will get beta because which is a conjugate cert. Take gamma from the answer option, use conjugate. Only thing what you should know is, some of the roots taken two at a time, it should be zero. If gamma is root two plus one, P plus root Q, write down like this, one plus root Q. Delta is nothing but one minus root. Alpha plus beta, two by two, it is nothing but one. Gamma plus delta, root two minus two, it is nothing but two. One plus one, it is two, alpha, beta, it is nothing but one minus three, minus two by four. One minus three, which is minus two divided by four. Gamma, delta, one minus two, which is nothing but minus one. Check if the sum is equal and to zero, if the sum is not equal and to zero, then it is not right. Alpha plus beta is nothing but two by two which is one, gamma plus delta. Gamma plus delta it is nothing but two, alpha, beta it is one minus three by four. Minus two by four, gamma, delta it is nothing but one minus two minus one, it is also not given. Go by the option D, let us see, option D, I hope the idea it is clear. Just plugging the values sir, only little bit of calculation is what that is required. So all gamma, if it is minus one plus root two, P minus root Q. It is minus one minus root two, alpha plus beta, it is again. One plus root three, two by two, it is nothing but one. All gamma plus delta, it is nothing but minus two. I hope the idea it is clear, plus alpha, beta, one minus three, minus two, minus two. Plus alpha beta, one minus three, minus two, minus two by four, minus one by two. Gamma delta minus one. Minus two, so it is minus three, like that substituted. Depending upon alpha and beta, which one is satisfying this equation, that itself is the answer. I hope you got the idea. Again I am summing it up. Again I am summing it up. If alpha is one plus root three by two. Beta will be one minus root three by two. Gamma if it is P plus root Q which is there in the answer option. Delta will be P minus root Q, P minus root Q. I hope the idea it is clear, just all you have to do is substitute in this one. Alpha plus beta into gamma plus delta plus alpha beta. Plus gamma delta, it is equal and to zero. It is equal and to zero. Idea clear? Next one. Another one, root two plus one by two is a root of the equation. What is missing here? The equation is X power four plus A X cube plus B X square. X is missing, plus C equal and to zero. Coefficient of X equal and to zero. If the coefficient of X is equal and to zero. If the coefficient of X, if it is equal and to zero. That means some of the roots. Some of the roots taken three at a time it should be equal and to zero. Some of the roots taken three at a time, it should be equal and to zero. Some of the roots taken three at a time it is zero. Some of the reciprocal of the roots. Some of the reciprocal of the roots, it should be equal and to zero. I hope the idea it is clear. So one by alpha plus one by beta plus one by gamma. Plus one by delta, it is equal and to zero. Now easily you will get it. This question can be solved by using the concept. Some of the reciprocal of the factors it should be equal and to zero. Some of the reciprocal of the factors, it should be equal and to zero. I hope the idea it is clear. For one example, I will show it to you. If alpha it is, let me use a different color, alpha is. One plus root two by two. Beta is one minus root two by two. Gamma, if I take first option as minus two plus root three. Delta, it is nothing but P minus root Q. Minus two minus two root three. So all you have to do is just to check it out. Which option is satisfying the equation? One by alpha plus one by beta plus one by gamma plus one by delta equal and to zero. Two by one plus root two. Two by one minus root two. D is nothing but one by minus two plus root three plus minus two minus root three. Rationalize it and try to find out the answer. I hope the approach it is clear, whichever the answer that will give you the answer, that itself will be the answer. Right? Got the idea right? So che- check it out, it is just nothing but little calculation intensive. The only thing which I wanted to teach in this question is. Some of the reciprocal of the factors will be equal and to zero. If the sum of the roots taken three at a time, it is equal and to zero. See this question. Question is, X power four plus A X cube plus B X plus C. Equal and to zero. What is missing in this question? Coefficient of X square it is missing in this question. Coefficient of. Coefficient of X square, it is missing in this question. What is coefficient of X square? It is nothing but some of the roots taken two at a time it is equal and to zero. Some of the roots taken two at a time, it should be equal and to zero. If some of the roots taken two at a time it is equal and to zero. We already discussed the concept. Alpha plus beta into gamma plus delta plus alpha beta. Plus gamma delta equal and to zero. All the coefficients are given as rational numbers. So probably there is no debate on whether it is, cannot be determined or not. If the coefficients are rational numbers, if one root is P plus root Q. Another root will be P minus root Q. Another root will be P minus root Q. I hope the idea it is clear.